Good evening, so for the day. We now reconvene to the regular scheduled meeting for Tuesday, February 19th, 2019. If you could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God.
Local.
Mayor Paulendorf.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olivera.
President.
Councilmember Herman.
Here.
Councilmember Matildee.
Here.
Councilmember Brolio.
Here.
Before we go into the approval of the agenda, staff has requested for item 7B to be polled. And also, oh, nope, that's it, right, okay. Is there any public comment on the regular agenda? Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda with item 7B being removed?
I move to approve as amended.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. State law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed. Is there any public comment? Nope, okay. Move on to agenda item number four. Report out of closed session from 2/12/2019. We actually only had two items. Item E was moved to this closed session. Both items B and C direction was given to staff. Item five. We do not have any report as we will reconvene after the regular city council meeting. Item six, consent agenda. The number of items on the consent agenda, is there any public comment? No, okay, I'll bring it back to council. Is there an approval on the consent agenda?
I'll approve this consent agenda.
What did he say?
Is there an approval? He moved it.
He moved it, I didn't hear you. Okay, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bye though. Now we're on to a regular agenda. First agenda item, 7A, is the presentation from the Calveras Council of Government. Amber.
So, the Calveras Council of Governments, Amber and I just wanted to take a brief moment to give the council an update on the weekend visitor service that kicked off on February 16th. So this is a new service that's picking up clients and riders at multiple hotels throughout the city and taking them on their way to Murphy's and Arnold's. So hopefully you saw a little bit of that in social media. And also, we wanted to take a minute to give you an update on the bus procurement for the implementation of that service and the service requirements and the bus needs that are planned in order to provide that service on an ongoing basis. So with that introduction, I will turn it over to Amber, the Executive Director of the Calveras Council of Governments.
Thank you, Melissa. I have, can I hand you some flyers?
Yes.
And I have brochures if any of the public. Okay, the council has a copy?
So we can do.
Yeah, I can leave it on the table.
All right, hello again. Amber Collins, I am the Executive Director of the Calveras Council of Governments as well as the Calveras Transit Agency. So I'll be representing the Calveras Transit Agency this evening with this update. I do want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to discuss Saturday service. We're really excited. As Melissa said, it got kicked off in February and is a nine-month service during the busy months of the year. So it goes all the way through November 2nd of this year, which is the Day of the Dead in Murphy's. And this year, we're really trying to improve the service to make it a reliable and viable service in the future. It's currently grant-funded. So we, this year are improving the service. We have eight trips a day between Angels Camp and Arnold on the hour. So it starts here in Angels Camp at the Travelodge and Capello side of town at 10:00 a.m., so on the hour. And then it goes to Worldmark and travels down 49 through your historic downtown, up through Murphy's to Main Street and Murphy's, and then up to Arnold, stopping at Big Trees Market. And one of the unique things about this service is that it stops anywhere along the route. So we have time stops in locations, you can catch the bus, but you can also catch the bus by flagging it down anywhere along the route. And you can also get dropped off anywhere along the route. The bus will also deviate three-quarters of a mile from the route, so it can drop off. It's beneficial to, I guess, wineries along the route where people can request a drop-off or pickup. Another thing that we just initiated was mobile ticketing. So there's this app that you can get on your smartphone called Token Transit, allows people to go on there and pay and purchase tickets on their app and then just show the driver your ticket on your phone. So you don't need to have any paper passes, but we also still allow cash purchase of passes as well. So we can do, provide the traditional opportunity to access the service. So we're really working directly with the different hotels, Worldmark, and the businesses throughout City of Angels Camp, Murphy's, and Arnold to promote this service. I do want to thank, I don't see W. Ponting here from Destination Angels Camp, and then also the Visitors Bureau has really been a good partner in promoting this service. And then, I think Melissa asked me to update you on the procurement of buses for this service. And I know in the past, the city had discussed use of trolleys for this service. So just a little bit about how we operate our service. Calveras Transit has six bus routes, including a Saturday hopper. So five during the week, Monday through Friday, and then the Saturday hopper on Saturday. We have eight buses to operate all those services. So we really rotate the buses throughout the different routes in order to manage the useful life of those buses, as well as interval of bus purchases. And given that this is kind of still considered a pilot project, we're still utilizing the buses throughout our fleet to manage this program. And if there were dedicated buses to this service, it would require three buses to operate it and then one replacement bus. So that's about a 40% increase in the number of buses we have for our entire fleet existing. And so, really, we want to focus right now on improving the service and making it viable for the future. And we really hope the city embraces this service as an economic development tool to improve, you know, your visitors' experience, improve access to your businesses and the hotels, and then also access for your residents who have employment during, on the weekend, or want to access shopping as well. So we're really looking forward to making this a viable, successful service in the future and look forward to the partnership with the city to improve it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I've got one for you. You said you would deviate three-quarters of a mile?
Correct.
To pick up and drop off?
Correct.
So how with, let's say I want to be picked up at my house. Would I call, or how would somebody line up a pickup at their house?
Yeah, you would call our customer service center?
Okay.
And then request a pickup, and they would schedule that pickup with the driver in between, and they'd give you kind of an estimated time?
Right.
Between those pickup and drop-offs. And as long as you live in a location where the bus can safely access your house and have a safe turnaround?
Right.
Then we can. You know, we are limited to our ability to access certain locations.
Yeah, no, it's just a really nice feature that I wasn't aware of.
Yeah, yeah, we think so too. So hopefully people, you know, know that it's available. And I think that's one of the things that we need to do a better job in promoting that as a part of our service.
I got a question, Amber. Some time ago, we saw a presentation that showed a little trolley-like bus being added to the fleet for this, I think it was for this service. Can you expand a little bit, refresh us on what happened to that?
Yeah, I think Melissa might have a little bit more background on the city's action.
Yeah, so it's my understanding that the city considered that item, made the recommendation to the Council of Governments, but for the reasons that Amber has pointed out, that they weren't able to procure a trolley for this service. One, the cost, and then two, the logistics of being able to get a trolley to the elevations. For those reasons, they had considered it. They looked for the opportunities to do it, but for this specific service, it wasn't going to work, nor was it going to work for the fleet needs. So they will be working on procuring two buses, I think two, necessary to support this service.
Actually, we're procuring two buses for the whole system itself, not specific to this service, because we don't have buses dedicated to this service. And so I think, you know, it was a cost element to consider. We do have limited capital dollars to fund bus replacement every year. So the trolleys would, you know, is typically twice, over double the cost of a regular bus in our system. And the cost of maintenance is definitely higher than maintaining a normal bus. And we have one fleet supervisor who's trained and skilled in the fleet that we have. So this should just be an added element for maintenance training as well. Yeah, and I think, you know, and I don't want to shut down the discussions of future opportunities for special buses for the city in the future. I think just right now, we really need to focus on making this a viable system or service. Right now, it's grant-funded and it's in its pilot stages. So, you know, we're hesitant to move forward with any special, wise sweep for this service.
Good.
Any other council question or comment?
And Amber, correct me if I'm wrong, but the trolleys can't pull the elevation or the inclines that we have provided for this service.
That's my understanding when talking with Trolley Transit, they do actually have some trolleys, that they just operate in the City of Sonora. And they've shared that limitation, that they can't take those trolleys up 108 or up to higher elevations. And this service does go all the way up to Arnold. So that's definitely was a consideration in terms of trolleys.
Because they're under power, or they're too heavy for?
Yeah, the weight.
Then, that's what I understand.
Okay.
Any public comment? Nope, okay. Thank you, Amber. We will be moving on to item 7C, approval of the contract amendment with Weber-Giyo and Associates in the amount not to exceed $6,400 to complete the current engineering work in progress at the Utica Hotel. And I turn it over to Melissa.
Actually, I think Amy's going to handle this one.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay, Madam Mayor, council members, this is basically out of assistance to the Utica Hotel. They've been sort of gone from engineer to engineer to engineer, and different planners have handled their project. And we have recently been able to get everybody up to speed and start getting everybody on the same page and start moving the project forward. And so that, we are asking that Weber-Giyo, even though a different engineer will be hired, at least be retained to try to finish up Phase 1, which is the bar and the parking in the rear. Weber-Giyo has indicated that they'll stay on until Drake Haglund comes onboard, and then they'll do a transition. But the applicant has asked for that, staff has asked for that, and we would highly recommend that the council approve this amendment to the contract.
Do they like, they like having that engineer enough to pay the $6,400 off?
They have already paid that amount as part of our inspection fees, so that amount is already available.
Okay.
Okay. Do any other council comment?
I just think it's a very good idea to not disrupt what is happening. I know that the Utica owners have really felt comfortable with Matt from Weber-Giyo. And I think right now, it's a good thing to just continue with that consistency to make it an easier transition later.
Is there any public? Is there any public comment? Back to council for any further discussion, comments before going on to? No?
Nothing here.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move approval. I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 7D, presentation of the fiscal year 2019-20 budget, development calendar, and council adoption of the proposal, proposed financial management practices. Emily.
Hello, I'm here to present with you, to your calendar for budget development and preparation as well as scheduling the public forum. It was recommended by City Gate in the City Gate report that we recently received to improve our overall budgeting process and our budget presentation. And so this is the beginning to that. This also includes financial management practices, which we'll strive to implement as we can. Let me know if you have any questions. I guess the main thing is, we're aiming for a release date of the draft budget to the public of May 21st. And so that'll give a little bit of time before our budget hearings for review.
Does council have a preference on the length of budget hearings?
What do you mean?
Two full days.
You might, can we, yeah, can you explain how normal budgets?
Sure. So we release the budget, and then that gives, we give you opportunity to review that. We come to the budget hearings. Each department head will do a presentation on their department. We hope to go over department objectives, their performance measures. We're going to try to identify performance measures. I think this year, it might take the form of goals, department goals. We'll review those with you, their benefited employee costs, and their recommended budget. Then what happens is, we try to bring to you a balanced budget. There's always supplemental requests where department heads come to you and ask for more things than we have funding to allow. And then there's an opportunity where we discuss your priorities and objectives, where we might be recommending something for funding, where you foresee during the presentation from the department heads, alternatives that you might like staff to consider. From those hearings, Emily goes back to her office, and then she makes any updates based upon your direction to the budget. That gets represented to you in the final budget. It takes, I think from my experience last year, we cut it short with a day and a half. We got through the general fund, but could have used more time, I think, on the water, wastewater budgets. But I want to be sensitive to everyone's schedule and everyone's time, and try to do our best to tailor those presentations to that expectation. So I'm open to your ideas and direction on the length of time for those budget hearings and what you're comfortable with.
Well, I think, given the issues with water, wastewater this year, it might lend itself to a longer conversation.
Okay.
And that might make it not work into two separate meetings, so.
Okay.
Might need the carryover, and maybe we should just plan for that.
I'm along for the ride, whenever.
So does council want to do consecutive days or consecutive, you know, pick, like during the week? Do it around a city council meeting, or do you want to do it just, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Monday, Tuesday?
Well, speaking for myself, I just keyed on the dates 6th, 7th, and 8th, and said, could I make that work? And the answer was, I could, so.
Me too.
Okay.
Okay. Before we, can we make sure everyone, give some time?
Yeah, absolutely. So tentatively, we'll identify that, and we can be open to further council direction should that need to be modified.
And then, one thing to note too, I think I mentioned it in here, is if we do the Thursday, Friday, roll over to Saturday, any hourly employees and overtime might also be a factor.
Was Wednesday off the table, I mean?
So that could be something that you would want to think about.
There's a COG meeting that night.
No?
No. I can see Wednesday up to 5:00.
I guess we mentioned that.
So Wednesday up till 5:00? Okay.
What if, if Saturday's a problem, if it carried over to?
Right, I don't want to have the overtime for all the.
We can look internally, I don't think that.
Yeah, I may have misspoke on that one.
But we will look, and then if those staff are impacted, we can adjust the schedule to where they present on the regular workdays.
And you only did a day and a half last year, right?
We did, and we ran out of time.
So you're already going to another half day on the 7th, and then a third day if needed, if needed for the 8th?
And I will definitely talk less, so we've got that going for us.
Okay.
Okay, so tentatively, we'll go ahead and try to work that out. Okay. I think that the other thing that Emily has presented for your consideration and ideas, and this is something that we look forward to working towards implementation and budget development, are the financial management practices. So if you remember, City Gate gave us those nine budget strategies to consider. And number one among them was a balanced budget, all the way to identifying capital income for infrastructure. So City Gate also provide us with a template for. I found this on the web for another half down the 730.
Sorry about that.
For financial management.
Exactly.
Practices. So instead of calling these policies, our goal is to work towards these financial management policies. But we thought a good start would be to present these practices, get your ideas and comments, and see how we can start working them into our annual budget process. And this process is under development, you know, between Emily and I and our city hall staff. And so we want to really look at what works, modify what doesn't, and then bring them back to you at a later date for formal adoption as an official policy. So I think that's pretty much the direction that we're headed. So if you have any thoughts or ideas, these would become sort of the guiding practices for us when we budget in the upcoming year.
I know in reviewing them, I think, you know, this, it's so good that we follow up on what City Gate has given us directions and suggestions. And I just think that, you know, in looking at it, if I was in finance, the goals and setting up this clear direction is really helpful. So I think it's very good. Thank you, Emily.
So an area where, and I think we'll bring these back when we go into budget development, just to remind, you know, we look at the fund balance and reserve. So at least 25% would be general fund, I think, fund balance, or approximately equivalent to. So when we identify that amount, I think it's about $900,000. So when we go into budget, when we look at our new revenue projections, when we look at negotiations and increased costs, this might be an area where we say, okay, what is the goal? What should we be working towards? And then I think we also plan to bring to you a discussion of the purposes for that reserve and set aside percentages. I think Emily plans on bringing that as a next step conversation when we have the unrestricted fund balance officially identified with the audit. So I think that these are opportunities for further discussion, but I think that these should be the targets.
I think, I think that, you know, more than just the City Gate issue, this would be my third budget cycle, and this is the first time I've seen this kind of advanced thinking going into the process. And I think you're to be commended for that. There's a lot to hold together as you work through the budget, but at least if you've got some checkpoints, you know, you can keep it from going into the ditch right out of the go. So I commend you for this body of work. I think this is really good. My first pass through it, I didn't see anything that I could be additive with. I think you did a good job of, you know, articulating the things that probably belong in the policy. It's not to say something won't jump up later, but I'd say job well done on this.
Very good. Thank you. This is the first time I've ever seen it well worked out for us to follow and be on the same page with staff. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Moving on to item 8, correspondent. Let me have one correspondent, Jack Lynch. From January 24th, 2019, regarding the wastewater water rate increase. Is there any comment from council? Any staff?
Back it up to council, if you would. Jack is in the audience, I think?
Yes.
Thanks for bringing your insight to this. You know, a lot of us were not around for the beginnings of, or the history of the water, wastewater issues, and there's a lot to consider, and so we appreciate your putting that forward.
I wish to express the same thing. It's been very helpful, and it gives us an opportunity to really include this in our, when we're going through this process.
I'd like to make a personal comment about the council members. You have like 100, most people don't realize this, Bert Silvernoses, 125, 150 pages of stuff to read, and it's a daunting task, plus the assignments that you have at LAFCO and the water, and so on and so forth. So a council person has to absorb an awful lot. I felt motivated to speak on this subject because it's a big deal. I have a comment, if I may.
Go for it.
I'd like to address the council regarding my email of January 24th, and the water and wastewater master plans, which we saw presented to the council on January 15th, the Weber-Giyo engineer. If you look at the big picture, the council is looking at, the consulting engineers are proposing to you $10 million in water projects and $7 million in wastewater projects for a total of $17 million. That's a, that's a lot of responsibility that each of you are receiving. If these projects are approved by the council, you then have to have the citizens and the businesses approve and vote on the new water and wastewater rates to fund these projects, $17 million. Our water rates, I went through the math, would double, two times, over what they are right now. And the wastewater rates would increase by 87%. If you look at it, if you go across all the tables, that's, those are the increases that are involved to finance it. Since the January 15th agenda item was an information only with no action taken, I am asking that the council schedule a workshop to review each of the projects that have been proposed. The list shown in the master plans, which were given out on January 15th, are not really that clear, and they also include a lot of low priority projects, so it's very difficult for me, as a reader, to know what's included or not. The workshop should review a clean list of proposed water and wastewater projects. As you may already know, the water and wastewater funds currently have $8.5 million available for projects right now. There's $8.5 million in the water and wastewater. And then that would be in addition to the $17 million proposed. That's the way I've met it anyway. Some division, some discussion of the funding. Some division, some discussion of the funding side of the projects should be included in a workshop. Considering the major scope and expense of the new master plans, a workshop review be beneficial for the citizens, for our community business, and the council, so we know what we're paying for before voting on a rate increase. And as a result of that, I'm formally requesting that workshops for water and wastewater be scheduled as soon as possible and before the public hearing, which I know you have in your schedule already. That's my pitch. Have a workshop and get everyone up to speed and make sure we have a clean list and we know exactly what we're voting for. And then resolve the issue of, we've got $8.5 million right now in the funds, sitting there in water and wastewater, and it's sitting there. And there's, there's, needs to be discussions about what, what are we going to be doing with that amount? Thanks for your attention. You've got a big job and all the best to you.
Thanks.
That's my request for a workshop. Thanks.
Thank you, Jack.
Thanks, Jack.
Go ahead. Oh, sorry.
If I may, Bert Soban, I live in Green Horn Creek. When I moved to Angel's Camp, I got involved in the long-range planning, which evolved into what is now the General Plan 2020, whatever it is. And it took three years of back and forth review between citizen representatives, the various departments within the city, and it quite honestly led to the hiring of a city engineer to coordinate all this. From the time that review and, review cycle was completed, it took the city another three years to issue that long general plan. Now, the reason that's important is that you're not just planning for the budget for next year. You have to take into account things that will be in the chute down the year, or two, or five, and consider those and prioritize those when you factor in your consideration of what you need to spend, need to spend being keyword. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bert. Is there any other public comment? Okay, staff, if you wanted to.
Sure. So I just wanted to give an update in response to Jack's comments. So staff is taking Jack's comments very seriously. We are working with our chief plan operator. We are also working, hopefully.
Yeah, it's, it's.
So we are also working with Debbie Ponney, who's coordinating the outreach. And then we've begun working with our engineer through Drake Haglen and Associates to evaluate the projects. And so through that process, we hope to come back to the council with an update. And then we'll also reach out to Mr. Lynch with an update as well. But we are vetting very seriously the information that he's provided to us and its merits and his experience with our system. And as a former city council member, we want to make sure that we address them. So we are working on that now.
Thank you.
Sure. And we're grateful for the comments.
Yes. Well, and I think it also, Jack, it helps staff be educated with the changes there, too. So it's appreciated to help them do a better job, do their job better as well. Next on the agenda is the consolidated staff report. Is there any council comment on the consolidated staff report in front of you?
Just like to commend you on the format, Melissa. I think it's good. Plenty of detail there. Gives opportunity for folks to talk about what's happening and what's in the queue. You know, I've gone through this, as I'm sure my fellow council members have, and very appreciative of seeing a lot of detail about what goes on, you know, in the city that's not necessarily in everybody's plain view. So I appreciate the format and well done.
And I like the behind, the percentages.
Yes.
This is helpful in keeping us updated where you guys are at and where we should be expecting you to be at.
Absolutely. And I think our goal for the budget is to identify those goals and milestones that you approve in the budget. And then this becomes a process where we can report on our delivery of those moving forward.
I have a question about the utility payments.
Okay.
Is there a, is there, what's the date, the point at which we won't take credit cards anymore?
I think Emily has an update on that.
So I think I need you to clarify your question because we'll always take credit cards.
We always will.
Yes. So the only, the only process that we're eliminating at City Hall is the existing automatic credit card payment. It's just, the way that we did it wasn't compliant with.
Well, that's what I was referring to.
And so, oh, okay, so that one, those auto, okay, yeah.
The auto debit to a credit card. What's, what's the date for that to go away?
The last date we will run those will be the March 20th billing, the bill's due on March 20th.
So everybody that's on that plan is going to get notified in a bill drop that it's ending or whatever?
Yes, yes. We, we are going to specifically reach out to all those people. We've sent preliminary inserts notifying that if you are on that system, that you will need to switch over. And, and then we will, once we figure out who's left on that list, we're going to reach out to those personally.
Is that a big number? Do you know off the top of your head, is it 50 people or 100 people?
It was, the, the total amount was about 160, but I'm not sure on the current how many, I don't think we have the, the number of how many have switched over already on their own yet.
Okay.
And just also to make note, it's very easy to do it on your phone as well. It's phone and tablet friendly. I tested it out and it, and I think you have a YouTube on.
Yeah, we posted some stuff. Yeah, and there's YouTube videos on how to do it. And if anyone has questions, they can always call City Hall and we can walk you through it.
How many people have we registered, Emily?
Have registered already? I, I have all the stats back at City Hall. I don't have it off the top of my head. We have received a lot, though.
Was last check, it was near 100 or over 100?
It was over 100.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
They're not even, are we going to turn it over to public comment?
I just wanted to check on the update about the police, kind of what's happening there as an update.
Sure. So Officer Mancana has graduated from the police academy. So we will be doing his swearing in at City Hall, I think, this week. And then we will be scheduling a meeting before the city council where we can do officially his swearing in. We are actively recruiting for an additional position. We, if you remember correctly, we have the two going through the academy. So we still have a vacant position and it's my understanding that we are in background check on that position.
On a lateral?
Yes. He's not in the academy, Brad. That's my understanding.
Okay.
I got one quick.
Yeah, go for it.
On the new projects thing, and I don't know if these are brand new or just I'm new and don't know about them yet, there's the 36 affordable housing units on Murphy's Grade Road and up to 87 affordable housing units thing off Capello. At some point, does not have to be right now by any means. Can you fill me in on those or the, I didn't know if they were new, old, straight away?
Sure.
Just a heads up for me to.
Yeah.
They are, one, they're both brand new. We've gone through a pre-application review for the 36 units on Murphy's Grade Road. That would be an owner builder, local contractor. And then the 87 would be Habitat for Humanity. They're currently undergoing a preliminary review to determine what the costs would be and how they might want to phase those in and how realistic that number is.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, I think Bert had a question, yes.
With regard to the.
Sorry. I was trying to catch him while I'm always up there and.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Since he can't.
With regard to the automatic credit card deduction, does that apply also to bank draft payments?
Yeah.
So those are still okay? That's all.
I was trying to get him while you were up here, so, thank you.
Good job, Emily.
Just to get it on, on the mic, so the, if you have it set up with auto pay through your bank, that is unaffected by the change. And also if you have it set up through City Hall to have your bank debited, that's also unaffected and that will remain in effect. So it's just if you have set up automatic credit card payments through City Hall.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Bert. Okay. And item 10, council report, go to my left.
See, the museum is just sort of meeting and we've been making some progress on discussing the kind of reorganization of the museum and different possibilities. But I couldn't probably go into the details yet because they're kind of hanging a little bit. But there is a lot of discussion and positive ideas coming out of the, what we're, what we, where we've been meeting and how we've been discussing.
No. Alan?
No report. I caught the last little bit of the museum ad hoc with Linda, the very last second because I had, sorry, I missed it. But everything seemed to be positive and good talks. And that's all I got at the moment.
Just that UWPA is in the throes of searching for a new GM and we're moving along in that process and hoping to make some significant progress sometime in the next month or so.
I have no report, but I do want to point out Ken from Udic Water Empower is here and she is our acting GM for the time being. I just wanted to let everyone know who she was. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is calendar.
Hey, tomorrow morning, 9:00 AM, IRWMA at the TUD offices. Then on Thursday, the 21st, at 8:30, we have DAX Executive Committee meeting and Museum Commission meeting.
And then there's the other one.
Yeah, there's a.
See.
Twolley County or Economic Development that day, too.
Yes, I'm getting there.
Oh, sorry.
That one's at 9:30.
Or later.
All right.
Okay. So Central Sierra Economic Development District at 9:30. UWPA is meeting on the 26th at 5:30, and we meet back here for council on March 5th.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may add, the Planning Commission continued its meeting of February 14th to February 21st, so we'll be here at 6:00 PM also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn and then reconvene to a closed session after the halls have been updated?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
What's the, what's the status?